I'd like to call the March 6 Planning Commission meeting to order.
Thank you Chairman Fontenot. We do have a little bit of unique things tonight. So first off, we have a new Commissioner. So I want to welcome Kim McCormick to the Planning Commission. Kim lives in Quell Creek and having someone to represent that geographic area has been a goal of, I know the Mayor specifically, but also the Council. So we welcome you. We also have a little bit of a uniqueness tonight. You see, there's only five members and our Chair and our Co-Chair are out of the country and John Warsham, who's led the, only other Commissioner to lead a meeting is out of town. So tonight, we need a new Chairman to run the meeting. So the Secretary will ask for a vote. We have worked with Chairman Fontenot and went over the agenda. Staff recommends that appointment for tonight's meeting. So Secretary calls that vote to order.
Do we have a nomination for Chair for tonight's meeting?
I'd like to nominate Paul Fontenot as Chairman for the night's meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. Paul, you are the Chair for the meeting.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We don't want him to get up and move a chair.
Motion passes.
Okay. Chairman Fontenot, the meeting is yours if you would like to proceed with the agenda.
All right. Well, we'll start with the consent agenda. Are there any Commissioners that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
We will present that and there'll be a chance to talk. So if we can leave it on the consent and hit them all at once. And I'm looking at Councilman Boone.
We would like to, but unfortunately, I'm not going to do it. We're going to see if we can't get some things straightened out during the course of the meeting.
AT&amp;T's here. If we need to remove it, we certainly can. So before we finalize the consent agenda, there will be that opportunity.
Okay. Commissioners, does anyone have any changes to the February minutes? Seeing none, I'll turn the consent agenda over to staff.
Thank you. John?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Nope. We're going to go through the consent agenda real quick. AT&amp;T's here. It's in the consent agenda. I'm just, John, I'm not able to navigate.
Can you?
There you go.
Okay.
There we go. Okay. So the utility reviews were previously removed for AT&amp;T and there's five of them here for the 115211 review. And I'm going to kind of give you the quick update, but we do have representatives tomorrow right from AT&amp;T if there's any questions. But in general, it was like, hey, let's get things cleaned up before we get any new projects. And we had a similar conversation with MediaCom a few months ago. And just to report a little bit, and if AT&amp;T would like to jump in, one of the concerns we have is when lines are down, obviously, you've got to get out and repair it quick, but leaving lines for months is a concern. And we did get some numbers here and the response times on that. And this is from February, January, February, and March. And I think the average was 14 minutes between, across those months. So 14 days before the repair and then it's actually buried and cleaned up. There are some poles that are waiting to be removed, especially on the Morphe project. I think there's eight left. And they have done the research to figure out what's the delay in those are. It's actually MediaCom and/or Unity remaining on those poles before they get removed. There were some concerns of when subcontractors or folks that are burying fiber and messing things up in the yard, questions like that. So I'll leave those questions to AT&amp;T to report if I missed anything and if there's any questions from the Commissioners on that. Just as a refresher, we've got the maps to kind of show where those geographic areas are, near Parker Road and Trentino. The second one was on Gafer Extension, Lowry Road. The third one was off Greeno at Cypress Lane and Spring Lake Drive. The fourth one was also off Greeno at Spring Run, Nichols Avenue Extension and Commerce Park. And the fifth one was from Pleasant to Morphe crossing Greeno. This one specifically had some significant concerns because there's a floodway running across Greeno. So there was some additional requests there. But I do want to give the Commissioners a chance to ask us any questions or if there's anything from AT&amp;T that we need to address that we haven't. Our utility reviews have went out. There's no outstanding utility inspections or items that AT&amp;T has not addressed. So our right-of-way inspectors have checked those things. There was nothing outstanding except for those eight poles. And they're working with, and that's Michael Smith and David Thomas. They're working with AT&amp;T, sorry, MediaCom and Unity to get the lines off the poles so they can be relocated or removed. So if there's any questions from Planning Commission, we can answer them. There is a list of conditions, but I want to give anybody the chance to speak before we recommend, make a recommendation to you in case we need to remove anything from the consent agenda.
Basically, I guess I'll start off speaking in the fact that I'm the one that kind of held this up last time and the fact that I personally have had problems with AT&amp;T removing their lines in a reasonable amount of time for my yard. That's a thing of the past, though. But the biggest problem I have is, is when you contact AT&amp;T, you seem to feel like you're pretty much nothing. They pay absolutely no attention to you. They don't move anything and nothing gets done. It's getting a little absurd that we keep approving these agenda items when the items aren't being taken care of in the previous jobs. So my recommendation basically is to just put AT&amp;T in, I'm not going to specifically put AT&amp;T on it, just that was my problem was AT&amp;T. But the, MediaCom and whoever else exposes these lines or put these lines out, if they're not done in a reasonable time, I'm hoping that we can get the City of Fairhope to make sure that the planning's on the board is notified so that we will turn these down continuously if you don't do the work completed before you come back with extra projects.
Did y'all want to present anything yourself?
Does any other Commissioner have anything to add? Would AT&amp;T like to respond?
Hey, I'm Wade Mitchell. I'm the County Engineer for AT&amp;T. So I handle all of Alton County. And I guess, Mr. Boone, we're happy to resolve issues like that. We've been pretty responsive with the city. I talk with David Thomas and Michael Smith on a weekly basis. So I know calling into our 800 number is typically for somebody trying to initiate service or report trouble with their service. So I would encourage them to contact us through the city departments that have our direct contact numbers and we get them addressed in a timely manner. That's usually how we handle those things.
Okay.
Other than that, I mean, we're looking, these five projects are facility upgrade projects in existing parts of town where we have maybe mediocre Internet service compared to what a lot of the new development has. So it is our kind of revamping of our network to provide better service in those areas.
While you're there, do you use door hangers?
Yes, that's part of the.
Is your contact number on that door hanger?
Mine is not. Our contractors have a person in Mobile that answers that line.
That's actually something we require. We want somebody that knows what's going on on that day the person calls, on that job site, that can address it and have a question. We actually make calls to make sure that's happening at times. That only affects the installation of these projects, these 115211 projects, not every project out there.
Okay.
If, it is the pleasure of the Commission that we do recommend approval of these utility reviews as part of the consent agenda with the conditions on the screen, which is the standard conditions. And as you know, that door hanger is there. And we actually review those before we let construction begin and check those numbers. So that is item six on the list. So we do recommend approval with the 12 conditions as part of that consent agenda.
All right. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion if we approve the consent agenda as listed minutes. You are 25.01. You are 25.02. You are 25.03. You are 25.04. And you are 25.05. On the first one, did I say 25? Okay, on the first one, sorry. 25.0.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous and we've approved the consent agenda. So we move on to our regular agenda. And on the regular agenda, we'll address the old business first. And the only item from the old business would be SD 25.04, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant Sawgrass Consulting on the behalf of the owner, PCH Hotels and Resort RSA for preliminary plat approval of Battle's Trace Phase 9 and 81 lot subdivision. The property is approximately 22.4 acres and is zoned TR Tourist Resort District. The property is located on the north side of Battles Road and on the east and west sides of Colony Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is, obviously, we were here last month discussing this case, this preliminary plat. And the project was tabled with the agreement of the applicant. And really, two conditions to go look at. One of those was a landscape or some trees and some buffer requirements or options. And then what is the current kind of status of the, I'm going to call it the drainage system, since it's not just within this phase. This is Phase 9 of a multiple-phase project. Just for reference, this is the acreage of the land. The plat and how the lots will be created is shown on the screen. This is what was in the packet showing the common areas, the carriage house lots, the townhome lots, and the single-family residential-sized lots. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the questions. I'm going to jump right to what was addressed. You know, drainage, there is a master drainage plan as every phase comes along, they've been brought into the maintenance of that. So that HOA is responsible for that. The city actually does not go out and require maintenance. That's up to the HOAs. But we do require a maintenance plan and that has been done throughout each phase and is presented in this phase. What did come up last month, when was the last time a maintenance inspection had happened? The engineer of record and their team did go out and inspect the whole system. There were some, there was a port presented and some things that needed to be maintained. I'll kind of show you the, but the summary there was it's operating as a system okay while there's some minor erosion, sloughing, and sedimentation issues. It doesn't affect the performance of that stormwater system. So we did ask the question, and I'm not going to hold. If it's 61 days, please don't call the planning staff. There is a, the maintenance work was anticipated to begin in approximately 60 days. I'm going to leave that up to the applicant if they want to talk about that. But they are in the process of getting some bids to get some of those things resolved. A lot of the other questions really was the main focus on the north property line as it abuts Hilltop subdivision and some concerns there on the landscape areas. And I'll show you the landscape plan here. The end result was there were some more trees shown. There was, part of it was a little bit of confusion because they effectively just showed a big area, we're not disturbing. It didn't show every tree. But there were some other trees shown on the survey. And a revision of the whole grading plan that would result in a 20-foot undisturbed buffer that would remain undisturbed on the north part of the property line, still would be a 40-foot common area. So there would be 40 foot before the road and then the road and then the lots on the other side of the road. But leaving the existing vegetation within that northern 20 feet and adding some additional landscaping, there's ultimately, that's going to, it's a little more expensive solution. There's a little retaining wall that has to be done to make that grade happen. But, you know, I think we met and tonight Chairman Fontenot, you joined us. I think there was a few folks that sat down and talked about the options and we're really pleased to see that this was presented and working. We do have a couple of, we still are doing a plat and there's a remnant parcel going all the way to Twin Beach. So the plat needs to show that. You know, that, it will be a lot that will likely be further subdivided in the future, but the plat does need to show that. And then just have a note on the plat where that buffer is, that it is undisturbed. But staff does recommend approval of this case with these two conditions as amended since the last month. So one, reflect the remaining properties, a lot of record, there's lot number on the plat and show the entire boundary of the property. And number two, add a 20-foot undisturbed buffer to the plat is shown on grading plans adjacent to Hilltop subdivision. The public hearing was opened and closed last month, but we did add that to the agenda as a public hearing. So if there's any questions about those two items, you know, we're certainly here to ask, answer those questions. The applicant's here as well if they would like to add anything that I may have missed or answer questions after the public hearing. With that, I'll turn it back over to the Chairman.
Commissioners, do y'all have any further questions for staff? Would the applicant like to speak now or after the public hearing?
I'll speak afterwards.
Okay. In that case, I'll open up the public hearing now. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please approach the microphone, state your name and address. And if we could, please remember to keep things moving to limit to three minutes. And if y'all could be so kind, if your comments have already directly been addressed, if you could just, you know, reiterate yours in an edited amount as possible, please.
My name is Jim Ellis. I live at 6902 Petio Drive, which is Lot 6 in the Hilltop Development. Have one quick comment and then a couple of questions that we would like for clarification. First of all, from a comment standpoint regarding the petition that we presented and our concerns about preservation of the trees, we appreciate the concession, the modifications that were made. While it's not everything we were hoping for, it is certainly a reasonable compromise and we appreciate the effort made by Sawgrass and the owners. Couple of questions are around the property line. Today, there is a fence, an old fence that borders Hilltop and that property. We're wondering if that's going to be replaced. We're not, we're not just saying we want it replaced, we're just wondering if it is going to be replaced because there are several large trees that straddle that property line between Hilltop and the Colony property, which we certainly would not want to be taken down just to put in a rather minimal fence. So our question is, is that going to happen? And is there any way to assure that any trees that straddle the property line would not be, would not be removed? That's my first question. My second question is a similar question. And that's, what's the process going to be to assure that that 20-foot buffer area is truly undisturbed? We have some situations that have occurred in the past between the Hilltop Division and the Colony where trees have been removed that straddled the property line and they were taken down without the input or involvement of the developer. And that happened about four years ago and that was a couple of very, a couple of very large live oaks. And don't know if that was a mistake or a problem, but, you know, there wasn't enough control there to make sure that things like that didn't happen. We'd like to know, you know, what steps will be taken to assure that that buffer is truly not disturbed during the construction phase? So we end up with what, you know, what the intent is with the modifications.
Okay. Thank you. And in the sake of efficiency, we're going to address all of the questions at once at the end of the comment section.
Sorry, I didn't intend to say anything, but I do have a question based on the plan. My name is Steve Cows. I live at 6878 Petio Drive in the Hilltop subdivision. My question is, the 20-foot buffer is listed on this plan as along the northern boundary. And then it also says, though, the northern boundary of the Colony property between our two subdivisions. The property does extend around towards Twin Beach as does Hilltop. So my question is, is this 20-foot buffer intended to form the boundary of the whole new platted development or is it limited to Phase 9? Is that?
I'm going to go ahead and jump in and answer that one real quick right now. Only thing we're dealing with tonight is Phase 9. Any other phases?
Right. Would have to come with that phase. Right.
My name is Diane Dyer. I live at 827 Geranium Drive, which is, it's Phase 8. And we can see Hilltop from our back. And while you've specifically addressed that Hilltop has a buffer, what about the eight, the six houses that are on Geranium where we've requested an undisturbed buffer as well? Has that been addressed or is that part of this discussion?
I'm going to, I don't have the street names up there, which one Geranium is. So if we can ask to get some clarification there from the applicant.
As we get through the public hearing, we will certainly address that question. There was additional landscaping, but we did not require that on the back of any of the lots that are budding Battles Trace properties. People can certainly plant things in their backyard to create buffers, but.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have Tim with Sawgrass address that as well, ma'am.
Okay. Can we get that in writing too as part of the plan?
We're just going to ask that question. We didn't give an answer, so we'll ask that question after the public hearing.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Troy Vickers. I live at 248 Cuban Lily Drive. I addressed y'all last meeting we had on this. And one thing, I'd ask the Chairman to don't close public comment until after the engineer has spoken. Let him be part of the public comment because last time it was closed, we could not address and ask any questions of the engineer after he spoke. Is that possible?
I mean, typically, we close the public comment, let the applicant respond to the questions, and then let the staff direct any additional questions to the applicant. It would be at the discretion of the Commissioners and the Chair, but I would suggest we can't get in a back and forth about question, answer, question, answer, you know.
I understand, but there were some valid, I mean, some significant points that he made last time.
I would suggest if you have questions there, we didn't have to open the public hearing tonight, but if you have questions that he might have stated last month, it would be the time to ask those now.
Okay. I know there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about a wildlife review of the area. And the area that goes back to Twin Beach, that's significant. We've got a major wetland to the south of us, I mean, to the west of us there. And there is a lot of wildlife in that area. I've seen it myself there. And the next question I've got is, has a regional drainage plan been developed from east of Greeno coming down through cross-section through this project area to the bay? I haven't seen one. If there is, I'd like to know where it is and where I could find that. But we're talking about adding a lot of impervious areas with all these projects that are going in that causes tremendous amount of drain and drainage and runoff in that area. If you remember, I think it was about a year and a half ago that we basically washed out Battles Road at the golf course from the water that was going down through there. So I haven't seen a regional drainage plan for that area. So I'd like to have some comment on that. And that's, I think that comes more from the city than it does from the engineer. But that's a major concern that we keep adding impervious areas there. The next thing is, we're talking about landscaping and everything. There was some questions about landscaping for houses that are existing on Cuban Lily, on the north side of Cuban Lily, with houses being backed up there, that there is a small buffer, but they were told they cannot plant any landscaping in there because that is considered to be a drainage area. So I'd like to hear what the engineer has to say about how that can be remedied to allow those folks to put a buffer of landscaping between them and houses that's going to be backed up right to them. And then lastly, at the last meeting, the Sawgrass engineer made a statement that they allow lot buyers to decide which trees to take out. And that was a statement he made here. And we'd just like to have that, if all possible, part of the approval. Doesn't slow their project down whatsoever. They can still build their streets, they can still put their infrastructure in. Just don't doze every tree down out there and let homeowners decide. Because I know a lot of people built houses out there and specifically said, we're going to take this house plant and we're going to put it on here because we can save this tree or that tree. Some are not big trees, but they wanted to save those trees because they know they will get big. get big and not have to plant a two-inch oak. Thank you for your time. Hope we get these addressed.
I'm Kendall Douglas. I live at 147 Hyacinth. We've been talking about the, the landscaping a lot, but one thing that was brought up and I've thought on more over the past month is the, um, is the traffic load coming out of that, um, out of Hyacinth and turning, especially turning left going into town. We live there and already know how congested it gets and, um, before, I'm not sure how many houses, I know the number was brought up, but I can, I can already tell you it's, it's gonna get markedly more congested because we already see it. Um, and whether there's any plan to build out another entrance onto Twin Beach in the opposite direction and, um, whether that is gonna be part of this project and whether it can be required to be part of it to offload some of that traffic.
Okay. Um, Hunter, do you wanna go first or Tim go?
I want, we, we felt a little bit just not knowing where the street was, so I do wanna address a couple of questions on the landscape on the screen. I'm sorry. The landscape right here is between Geranium, so there are tree shrubs planted on the backside of that property and, and proposed here to be planted. So I believe the, the question from Geranium, uh, I believe that was Dyer.
Okay. So that's, so that's what I thought. Those six, those six lots, they've added, um, additional landscaping provided and that's highlighted there.
Yes.
In addition to the trees, the additional landscaping is part of the plan. Am I understanding that right? Am I reading it correctly?
It is, that is not a, a non-disturbed buffer. That is a area that has to be graded and they, when they get through, they will be planting on the backside of the lots on the north side of Geranium Way. The undisturbed area is the, um, I'll kinda answer a couple of questions from the city. A wildlife review was not done in that area. It's been undisturbed since its inception. Uh, there was just a blob. You can see kinda on the side here, all the trees. There was only five shown, but what officially was shown on the plans was an undisturbed area. So there was never intent and we wouldn't have let, frankly, we wouldn't have let them go in and, and take out some of that wetland area. But they did go out and survey this, the trees shown. So a wildlife review, not specifically, but the wetland delineation, all of that was, has, uh, done and shown on the plans. We do not, that I know of, have a regional drainage plan. That's very, too much specificity. We have a drainage system that gets reviewed and every project that is reviewed, we're a city that is 125 years old. Some of the properties were built before our current regulations. Um, and, and Chairman, uh, Cortinas is also our building, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cortinas is also our building official. So he might be able to elaborate on that a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the biggest thing is on a regional, the part of the issue you have is the mismatch of city and county property. It's hard to, it would require a really coordinated effort between two jurisdictions because we, we can't go study property that's not in the city, city, or the county can't come in. So it's done as things come along and you, and you look at it as you come along. But the effort to do, when you're talking regional, you're talking about a whole bunch of private property and a whole lot of property that's either in the city or in the county. And it would, it, that would take a really big coordinated effort. Now, there have been discussions, but it has never happened.
There, it, it's not to say, no, everybody's turning a blind eye. We're certainly coordinating and looking at, you know, it, it affects the, the wetland flood zone regulations in both jurisdictions, um, studies that are done, requirements that are done at time of development, which have, you know, evolved through the years. So, uh, believe that if we need to add anything, um, I'm gonna let you give your first shot at the traffic if we need to, you know, supplant any questions there. Um, Tim.
Can I ask another question? On, on where you've got, or up here where you've got additional landscaping and can you define for me undisturbed? Because the proper, the, the land behind Geranium, while it may look like scrubs and bushes to y'all, that is pretty much undisturbed foliage and, uh, trees back there. So define undisturbed for me.
Is this Geranium here? Okay. This area will be disturbed. There will be removing of the plants in there and when they get done with the grading, there will be new plants put in. This area is going to be undisturbed. There's, nobody ever said there was gonna be an undisturbed buffer on Geranium.
Oh, excuse me. When I bought the house, I was taught there would be a 30-foot wildlife buffer.
Yeah. And unfortunately, there's a relituer. We're, we're not gonna get into that. We're only here what is, um-
Uh, I wasn't told about a relituer.
Yeah. That, that has nothing to do with this case and, and I'm, I'm-
Right.
Sorry. I think there was a good effort to address those, um, landscape requirements. I, I, I can't tell you who's told people what would be there. We, we deal with that unfortunately, um, in every case we see. So, um, if there's any, anything from, questions from Tim, I've got kind of a list of the other questions if you wanna give your shot. If you miss anything.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioner members. Um, I'm gonna kinda go through the list of questions that was asked and address them to the best of my ability. First, I'll start off with Mr. Ellis. Um, he asked about the existing fence that's between Hilltop and the Colony. I, I personally don't know the exact shape that fence is in, but I do know that they like to install what we call a field fence around the perimeter, which is what you see a long section. It's a probably 42-inch high hog wire fence with wooden post. Um, if the fence is in need of replacement, they will replace it, but we will work, certainly work around the trees, you know, move it on, you know, a couple of feet onto our property. Whatever needs to happen, we're not gonna go in there and cut down any large trees to, to install that fence if it's in need of repair. Um, yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure, that's an erosion control fence that you're putting up around the property, is that correct? Or a regular fence?
A regular, a regular fence. We have it a long section and a long battles now. It's, it's just a-
I just wanted to make sure.
But we will have erosion control fence up as well.
Right.
Um, regarding what's there to ensure the 20-foot buffer remains, um, not only is it on the construction plans, we'll discuss that in depth with the contractor. That is a very important item before construction starts and staff has also requested that we put that on the final plat to be recorded. So there will be a recorded document that shows that is to remain undisturbed.
And Tim, do you want me to just add there to, to get kinda sp- very specific on that? Before anybody starts land disturbance, there is a plan that shows BMPs and tree protections and those tree protections and fences will be along that northern property line and around the trees that are scheduled to be preserved along with the silt fencing, construction entrance and all of those things. That's one of the first steps we look at before construction begins on a phase.
That is correct. Um, I wanna miss, uh, just Dyer's questions about, about Geranium and the undisturbed buffer. I know Hunter touched on it and, um, just to provide some additional clarity on this, um, we did try to preserve or make better any, any adjacent property areas for what was on the master plan. So if you look along that area in Geranium, we have the, the same sized lots behind what's on Geranium that are there now. The master plan showed those lots of budding. Now you have a 60-foot buffer with landscaping installed, so in, in my opinion, we've improved what was shown on the master plan that was there when they purchased the lots. Same deal on Cuban Lily, um, which is over here. This is verbatim what was on the master plan and then we've even taken, and there's no guarantee that they remain, but we've, we've moved the grading limits 20-foot off of those property lines. So those trees will remain on those lots and it will be up to the homeowner if they wanna take them down when they build their house. I would assume if there's some nice trees in that area, the homeowner may like to keep them. Um, but again, I do wanna state that these are on lots and will not be, you know, they'll be the responsibility of the homeowner to make that decision. Touching on the regional drainage plan, I, I think Hunter covered that well. I will say that we have designed this, this subdivision or this phase as well as all other phases to meet, meet or exceed the regulations by, that are put in place by the city and the city subdivision regulations. Um, and it, it, it all ties into the existing drainage and, and, and works its way out of one to two outfalls of the subdivision. Um, and then finally, I will touch on, uh, Mr. Douglas's comment about the traffic. We have had a, an in-depth traffic study, uh, done for this development. It does include, uh, the study for full buildout and right now we have three entrances of the subdivision. There will be a fourth entrance on Twin Beach at full buildout. And as part of that traffic study, there are no, uh, improvements to any of the surrounding streets, Twin Beach, Section Battles required at this time. That's not to say that, you know, as some of this other property gets developed and new traffic studies are done, maybe that, maybe that does have to happen at a later date. But per the current traffic study, um, none of that is being, being recommended or required at this time. And I'll stay up here if anybody's got, if y'all have any other questions on me right now.
I would like to repeat the thing about Cuban Lily again, with the intentions for about the lots to be backed up too.
So the, the new lots that will be in Phase Nine where I've got the mouse right here, we, we left the grading limits 20-foot off of the property line into their backyard. So that would give the owner to the discretion to leave the trees if they so choose to do so.
Did commissioners have any further questions?
Just for the record, Mr. Chair, you do need to close the public-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. The, uh, public hearing is closed. And without any more comments from commissioners?
Yeah. I know. I'll say a couple, I just wanna say a couple things. Let everybody know, you know, I pulled all of the questions, I looked at everything in the pack and I saw all of your letters and went through and looked at it. I mentioned it at the last meeting and I have a, something we deal with that's very similar to what I'm seeing with the questions you have in terms of building house, having building code standard, having to meet that standard and then a builder or someone saying, well, we're gonna do other things as well. And I actually had a house six months ago. I had an owner call me and say, I want you to withhold my CO because there's things that builder said he wanted to do that he hadn't finished yet. Can't do that. We are enforcing, we can enforce what our regulations say as long as they're enforced properly or they're meeting those minimums. A lot of the things that you guys have are gonna be discussions between you and your HOA and your developers. The one other thing I wanted to mention, in the last meeting, we talked about the safety gates. The SOS siren systems on all the gates have been repaired. They've moved the monthly check, they've moved the maintenance checks from every six months to every month. And we have also, several of our vehicles have those SOS sirens installed. So I coordinated with Chief, Fire Chief Ellis, our fire safety inspector, and we can periodically go in and verify and make sure they're good. I know Chief Ellis also made sure all the Knox boxes had keys in it and they have access to those gates so that emergency services can use them.
Okay. Um, do we have a motion on SD 25.04?
Yeah, Mr.-
I got a question before we do that.
I'm sorry.
For our attorney. I wanna make sure all the rules and everything have been met and there's not a whole lot we could do about it, right?
Yeah. If they comply with the regulations, um-
I've asked this question 100 times in, in different meetings and the fact that, do we have to approve something we don't like? And yeah, unfortunately, yes, you do. It's-
If they comply with your regulations and applicable rules and ordinances. Um, unless there's some health safety reason or some substantial justification that's really unique, if they complying with the regulations and the ordinances and applicable rules, planning commission needs to follow the law and approve it.
Okay.
Yeah?
A motion?
Yep.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a motion? Yep.
I, I move to approve SD 25.04 Battles Trace Phase Nine, subject to staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that we approve SD 25.04. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, all opposed. Um, it is unanimously, uh, approved.
So as, as some of our guests are clear now, we'll, the next items are under new business. And I'll go ahead and give a, a preamble. The next two cases, SR 24.0. Yeah. I'm letting you, SR 2407 and SD 2501. I will present those together. It is the site plan review and a multiple occupancy project for the same location, for the same building. Uh, so as we commonly do, I will present those two items together, um, in one presentation and then we will vote on those separately at the end. SR 2507 and SD 2501 are next.
I'm 2501.
That's one group.
And SD?
Yes, ma'am. We'll be discussing that next.
Oh, is that me? I-
We'll go on to new business. Um, since this is a site plan review case, I'll remind the public that the city council is the final approving authority for the site plan review cases. The planning commission will be making a recommendation to the city council for the So this is, um, and I'll read both of them, um, as they will be presented together. SR 24.07, request of the applicant, Overstreet and Associates on behalf of the owner, uh, Bonaventure Two, a site plan approval for Stagger's mixed, mixed-use project. The property is approximately 0.2 acres and is Zone B2 General Business District. The property is located on Morphe Avenue, west of South School Street. And then we have SD 25.01, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant, Overstreet and Associates on behalf of the owner, Bonaventure Two for Stagger's Mixed Use Project, a three-unit, multiple occupancy project. The property is approximately 0.2 acres, is Zone B2 General Business District. The property is located on Morphe Avenue, west of South School Street. And I'll-
Thank you, Chairman Fontenot. Uh, Mike Jeffries, City of Fairhoop. As I said, this is the multiple occupancy project and a site plan review for the Stagger's Mixed Use Project. Property is located on Morphe Avenue, west of School Street. It is just adjacent to the Methodist Church. On the screen, on the left, you can see the aerial. It is Zone B2. It is B2 to the east and to the west of the property. It is R4, which is our residentially zoned property to the south. You'll see in the landscape plans, they do provide the required incompatible land use buffer for that. On the right is the aerial. On this site, there used to be an existing metal building that has had a few uses throughout the years. That building has since been removed, so we do have a bare site. A lot of the existing asphalt remains. The site was nearly completely impervious, uh, prior, uh, prior to the demolition of the building. On the screen is the site plan. We do have three units. Two of these are residential use, which requires two parking spaces, the two- The two parking spaces are being provided for at the rear of the site. There is an ingress and egress easement and drainage easement that has been agreed upon and recorded and probate with this property owner and with the Methodist Church. So we see the, we ask for the turning movements to be provided on how to, going to get into the back of that property and how you're going to be able to exit. So there is room in that side of that easement to be able to back out into it and then be able to pull down the drive, so we're avoiding backing out onto Morphe Avenue. There are also with this, two additional spaces that are being proposed to be constructed in the right-of-way, which would be an increase of two parallel parking spaces to city parking out on the street. Those are not reserved spaces for the property, those are public use. Here's an enlarged plan of the architectural details showing what is going to be located there. Morphe is on the top of the screen. You can see those new parking spaces. I'll also draw your attention to typically in the CBD, the businesses are, you know, we're pushing those up to that property line unless there is some type of open public space with that. We do have the sidewalk and a open area with landscape planters being provided here as a kind of a courtyard. The sidewalk is six feet in some places and expands out to upwards of 12 feet in other places. The City Council can approve a sidewalk down to six feet. The CBD requires an eight-foot sidewalk unless granted through site plan review by the City Council to six feet. The six-foot area is mostly on the western portion of this where it touches and gets into the churches, starts to go towards where the church property is. The remainder of the sidewalk, as I said, is upwards of 12 feet and leads into an open porch with a couple steps into the building. There's a handicap ramp being provided on the east side of the property coming from the right-of-way onto the private sidewalk and private property that is located there. We do have the first, second, and third floor plans available here, and we can come back to these if needed. I'll mention that the third floor is not a full floor. It does drop, from when you get back to Morphe, it does drop down in the back, so it's not a continuous solid three floors. Our elevations, this is the north elevation looking at the front from Morphe. Another additional with not having that building pushed all the way to the right-of-way line allowed for some balconies to extend out from the front of that and actually be over top and still inside of their property instead of encroaching into the sidewalk, potentially interfering with any street trees or future street trees that may come into the future. But from this view, you can also see where that second-story building stops, and that third story picks up and does not continue all the way back. There is access to some of the residential units from a stairwell in the rear as well. The south elevation, this is looking from the rear. The trashcan storage is back here located on a concrete pad with it. The east elevation, as I mentioned, the setbacks in the CBD usually require those buildings to be built at the right-of-way line. This proposed project does have the public open space and an extension of the six-foot wide sidewalk that's provided in the right-of-way. The building height is at 39 feet 1 inch below the 40-foot required, 40-foot allowed in the CBD. I mentioned the balconies are on the front side. The building pulled back from the right-of-way allows those balconies to be completely encased in the property. Sidewalk proposed at the front of the building, due to some of the proposed landscaping and the transitioning to the handicap ramp, that sidewalk is six feet in a couple areas, but is 12 feet towards the center. There were no issues with the proposed lighting plan. The building drops down for the mechanical, where the mechanical equipment is located, so that is all screened and not visible from the street and is not protruding over that 40-foot maximum height. The two parking spaces for the two residential units have been provided. ADA requirements per the architect are met. At the time, a building permit will be further verified. The two spaces on-site are dedicated for the residential use, not for the commercial use. Therefore, the architect has stated, and he can speak more on that this evening if there are any questions. The dumpster location, the city will provide rollout bins, and those are stored on a parking pad, near the parking pad at the rear of the building. Stormwater and drainage, there's already existing infrastructure between the subject property and the adjacent church. The drainage and ingress/egress easement has been provided between these two properties so the water will sheet flow from the proposed property into a trench drain and continues where it has historically out through an outfall to the south. There is additional storage volume has been accounted for in the new storm pipes. Any signage will be reviewed at the time of assigned permit submittal. Erosion control, that will all be reviewed at time of building permit. Utility plan has been submitted and reviewed by the appropriate providers. A traffic study was not warranted. They're utilizing a private drive to access the parking spaces in the rear. Staff's recommendation for case SR 24.07 is for approval, and staff's recommendation is for SD 25.01 is for approval as well. I am happy to answer any questions on behalf of staff, and we do have the engineer record and the architect for the project here tonight that can also answer questions on behalf of the applicant.
My question is, what is the picture on 24, SR 2407 of Valanta in Greeno? I'm sorry?
It's a mistake. It's incorrect now.
It's wrong. I'd appreciate that at the very beginning.
In the staff report?
Instead of the very end, as I'm going over, where in the hell am I?
Apologize for that oversight in the staff, in the staff report.
Since I live pretty close to this project, I'm trying to figure out what Greeno Road's got to do with this project.
This project has nothing to do with Valanta or Greeno Road or anything. Both of this. And Chairman Fontenot, we will need to open the public hearing for the SD case.
Okay.
Yeah, I caught it.
Does any other commissioner have any other comments? And would the applicant like to add anything?
After the public hearing.
After the, okay. So I'll open up the public hearing now. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please approach the mic and state your name and address.
I'm Carolyn Booth. I live at 154 South School Street. I'm the only person probably that's affected in any way other than Mr. Falls next door on the east side of this property. I'm at the south side of the property. So you can see my roof in that picture. My main concern is air conditioner units and them humming 24/7 all day long and no buffers or any kind of, like at the library, no enclosures around the air conditioners of any sort to, I can't enjoy my backyard because I deal with the Methodist Church all the time, and their units are layering like 24/7. I also, I guess I had, that existing fence was torn down, and I understand that they're to put the existing fence back. But what happens is, in the meantime, is, and if it doesn't connect right at the corner of the church and Stagger's property, and my property, if the fences don't come together there, I've stood in my backyard and have vagrants walk through my yard. They walk down my driveway and back through to the corner because they think that's a good cut-through. And there's nothing to stop them. So we need to address that little corner there. And I don't know who I'm talking to, really.
You're addressing the commission up here, right?
Well, he spoke first, and I didn't know what his position was. I mean, I'm just a property owner.
Right.
And I've lived there forever, so I have, my questions are real big. And the fence issue, though, needs to be looked at real closely. And I've, this week, had my survey made by the Moore surveying, and we have the lines that I need, but I don't, I'm kind of stuck. I don't know where to go from here. Do I ask you to get your fence up there? Or do I, and then, and that would block some of the AC problem. Where are the ACs for this building?
So...
I'll be, once we have all of our questions, I'll be happy to get up and answer that.
Right, okay. So, yeah, so...
That's my real big problem.
Right, so, yeah, between the applicant and the staff here, I'll try to respond to all of your questions and issues, so absolutely.
Well, that's my biggest question, and the other is right there, that existing fence that you show. It's not existing.
Okay.
So I just want to know what kind of fence.
Okay.
Will it be eight feet? And that concerned me that, but I think he answered that, the balconies are all Morphe side. I didn't want them hanging over my back porch, you know, my lot, if I could help it, or, you know, give me a little break. I'm squished between a Methodist church and a street.
Right, so...
And there is a landscape buffer required in the rear.
Oh, 10 feet. Whoa.
10 feet with a fence and shrubs that, you know, are tree ordinance.
I know, but I'm not, I know, understand that, but I'm just saying, I want to get the fence high enough like it was before that we've got a fence big, a nice, high fence there.
Don't know, it's...
Maybe only for the people coming and going.
The fence should be eight feet per what the buffer requirements are, but where that fence is going to meet up between your property line and the churches and that whole corner, it's going to be along the rear property line. So it's not going to turn the corner. The only way to really stop vagrants from coming through yours would be to fence your property off to ensure that they can't get through instead of the church trying to fence off and Mr. Staggis, they'll have just along that rear property.
They took, they did the property line, so I know where that is. I just don't like living in a box. I'm used to living where we all knew each other at one point, and it's hard enough when you have a church behind you because they don't, you can go all day and see them and they never answer you. So I'm just working with that now, and I don't know what to do. Nobody gives you any feedback. That corner, the church does have Dempsey dumpsters there, too, and that's real delightful. There's other places they could put it, or they could put a fence around it or something, something to block it. So there's trash always on the ground around us.
So, yeah, tonight, we can only address the Stagger's property?
Well, that's what I'm saying. That whole area, Stagger's property and Fairhope and the Fairhope Methodist, and that's all we can do. But I just want to warn you that that comes together right there, and somebody's...
Sure.
We need to work that through a little bit to, I mean, while I've got somebody that knows about it, they can deal with it. It wouldn't take much.
Right, absolutely, so...
I mean, if I were building a big building, I would like to make everything meet.
Right, we understand.
Yeah, and let's get the architect or engineer up to answer some of those questions.
Right, exactly, yes.
All right, I'm not trying to hold you up.
Any other public hearing?
So if there's no one else to speak on this from the public, oh, okay.
Sorry. I'm Blakely Davis. I live at 500 Morphe Avenue. I just need some clarification, please. So there are two parking places for the living portion of your plan. How many apartments are there? I just, there're just two?
Two.
Oh, okay, all right. Because the traffic is, I know you all have considered that, but I live right past Carol and right in that same area, and it's a busy little place. This looks like a great design and a great project, and I know it's been covered completely, but that helps me if there's two parking places, and I hope they're all single, if they buy, if they buy an apartment. They only have one place, so they're going to be somewhere else.
They're not small, you know, they're nice, really luxurious.
But they only get one parking place?
It's, this is, I'm sorry. This is actually in the central business. So let's, something that, you know, we didn't emphasize here. This is within the central business district. It does have special rules. It is the edge of the central business district, so I'll also live on Morphe. It's, I don't get to skirt some of those parking requirements. So they are providing two onsite parking spaces and then also providing the two on, so they're actually doubling what's required. That's not a sea of parking, but they will have to park.
And downstairs is retail?
Yes. So in the central business district, there's on-street parking and some others, and the uses that they proposed have not needed additional parking.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public?
There's nobody else there.
Well, if there's no one else from the public, we'll close the public hearing now.
I'm Bo Lebatard, I'm the architect on the project. Just wanted to speak with, to Ms. Booth about the mechanical units. They are located on the, can you hear me?
No, you're good.
Oh, okay. I guess the elevation, maybe. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, so, yeah. So we have two, two mechanical units for the commercial spaces that's going to be inside of this courtyard here. If you can see, so there is an eight-foot fence around that, so you should not be able to hear it or see it, or not hear it as well. And then for the other units, they're actually on top of the building, and there's a 42-inch tall parapet around that as well, so a solid wall around that as well. So you shouldn't be able to see that and barely hear those. And these units aren't massive units, they're just your typical residential-sized units, so they're not going to be putting out the noise you would expect from a commercial building.
And, you know, Bo, I would like to just check with you and Robert. I do think it would be wise, if possible, I don't think there's a whole lot of grading on this site. It might be wise if you can go ahead and get the fence and the landscape installed on the front end of the project. Might help absorb some of that noise during construction as y'all move through the project.
Well, I know that's just temporary, but...
No, that would be the, if it works, you know, I think that would be the permanent solution if it can be installed on the front end and still...
To keep people from walking back and forth.
If you could check on that for me, just see if...
Yeah, we'll speak with the contractor on that, probably have maybe have some type of construction fence around it as well to help them out. Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Something to help them, because my husband has one. He can take his down if it gets in your way.
Right, okay. All right.
Just one, I know I'm splitting hairs here. I can certainly add a note to the plans to add, to build the fence and landscaping on the rear of the property at the beginning of construction, that's easy done. The other thing, and I don't think this has gotten enough attention, this is going to be an owner-occupied building, so it's in the owner's best interest to make sure that fence gets up, you know, and the noise is low. And then, again, I know I'm splitting hairs here, is an eight-foot fence allowed in Fairhope? I know some cities don't allow eight-foot.
Yes.
Yes, actually, for, this property being commercial can be 12 feet behind the front.
I thought you had to have a variance for 12.
In the central business district. We are budding residential, so we might need to check on that. But yes, eight-foot is completely okay.
Right, yeah, definitely. Right, yeah, definitely, yeah, yeah, that's throughout.
Yeah, so that, that was, I think, what was on the plan, eight foot would be A-OK.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Do I have a motion? Well, first, we'll have the motion on the 24.07. Recommendation to the city council on the.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the city council approval of SR 24.07 for the Stagger's mixed-use project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. It passes unanimously, and we'll go to the next, the next item, which is SD 25.01. And that is for the MOP? And so do I have a motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve SD 25.01 for the Stagger's mixed-use project.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. It passes unanimously. And we'll move on to the next agenda item is ZC 25.02. Public hearing to consider the request of the applicant, S.E. Civil, on behalf of the owner, Robert and Renee Taylor, and FST Blue Island Owners Association to amend the planned unit development known as Hermitage Court. The property is approximately .36 acres and is located at 620 Hermitage Court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a very simple change that requires a PUD amendment. Because a PUD is so special and large and custom zoning, it requires something a little unique. The zoning goes with this piece of property that's in shown in blue on the left. I've got a quick diagram that kind of shows, at the end of the day, what is being proposed here. The area in blue is, are the lots in question within this PUD, known as Hermitage Court. The property owner of Lot 7, shown on the area on the right, would like to purchase land behind them to add to their backyard. So no additional lots, no new homes, no traffic, no drainage, nothing that would affect any of those things. But because it's a PUD, we actually need to amend the zoning ordinance. And to accommodate that, there will be a replat that has to be done, so we make sure we're not doing a lot, creating a new lot of record. There's some limitations, there's a drainage easement existing there, and nobody's planning on building within that. The setbacks were adjusted to kind of stay away from the property lines and work within those jogs. But at the end of the day, this is just to accommodate making one of the lots bigger, and the administrative replat will be the facilitating, but we can't do that unless the zoning is changed first. This would have to go to the city council for final approval, but we do recommend approval of this, and this is just a formality. We do have two conditions. There's closing on the property and making sure the right property owners, and while you see so many applicants there, every property owner within that PUD has to sign off and approve on a PUD amendment. So we will need to make sure that those bound copies of the master development plan are done and complete with the new property owners, and then record the replat with bottom paneling pro-break. We don't want a PUD to happen, and then we don't get a replat. Just want to make that a condition, so we have that done. But if there's any questions, I'm here to answer those, and I know Aaron is here with S.E. Civil. If there's any question for him, this is about as easy as it gets for us. Well, it just requires paperwork, a lot of paperwork. This is why we don't recommend PUDs for simple things. It can be a maintenance nightmare.
Sounds a lot for someone who just wants to increase the size of their yard.
It is.
So commissioners, do y'all have any further questions for the staff? And would the applicant like to add any?
How are y'all? Aaron Collins, S.E. Civil. I did want to mention that our client has already closed on this property last Friday, so basically, we're having to move through this process because there's another deal that has to happen with FST with property change in hand and being leased back to our client. So they've already closed on this portion of the property.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please approach the microphone and state your name and address. We have anybody from the public? There's not, so we'll close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the city council for approval of CZ 25.02 Hermitage Court.
Do we have a second?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was that with staff recommendations?
I'm sorry.
Was that with staff recommendations?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Only sitting there staring at it, I don't know why I didn't say it.
I know, it's a formality.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. It passes unanimously. So we move on to the next agenda item, the final item for tonight, and that is Resolution 2025-03, Public Hearing to Consider the Request of the City of Fairhope's Planning and Zoning Department to Accept Resolutions 2025-03, Adopting the Temporary Suspension of Consideration of Certain Residential Multiple Occupancy Projects and Subdivision Applications Under the City of Fairhope Subdivision Regulations as Set Forth in Ordinance 1823.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The full resolution is on the screen, that's also in our packets, if anybody would like to see it. Of course, you can reach out to the planning department, we'll get you a copy. This is in the city council, help me out with the dates, the last meeting or the meeting.
This was the last meeting.
Two meetings for, or. Has adopted a resolution that has the same language on this suspension of certain applications for nine months. So this is just in support, in supporting that and making sure we're all on the same page. So no new language, this is not a second suspension. In case anybody's looking or getting calls, where this is the same language and same applications that would be suspended during this time period.
So the way I understand it, this is just us formally endorsing and going along with the city councils.
Great way to put it.
Do we have any other questions for Hunter? Okay, if not, I'll open the public hearing now. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please approach and state your name and address. I don't think we have anyone, so I'll close the public hearing now. Any further discussion? And do I, do I have a, a motion?
Is it? It's just strictly a motion to accept, correct? Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 2025-03.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept Resolution 2025-03, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, and it passes unanimously. Let's see. Okay, I think that is it, if we could have a motion to adjourn. It's been moved, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
I gotta, gotta say, you did a great.